Call to order, the Danby Select Board Meeting for March 9th, 2023. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Greg, would you please call the roll?
Abbott. Bender.
Here.
Fuller.
Present.
Haynes.
Here.
Power.
Here. Beth, would you please read the procedure for remote access?
Remote access to select board meetings, while not required by law, is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town's citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Businesses conducted and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees in person or remote who wish to comment on an agenda action item when it is addressed in the course of the meeting should indicate such intention during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for remote attendee participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Intention or desire to speak, in order to comment or ask questions, will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. People will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online host will alert the chair to presence of remote questions and comments. Remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their devices, identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will be muted. General ground rules concerning decorum remains the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person. Namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. Procedures for the use of the online platform and the above standards will be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And who is participating remotely with us this evening?
Terry Parker and Chris Hardaway, Doug White, Gary Dur, and Lynn Bondurant, Sarah with no last name indicated, Andrea Stor, Annette Smith, and someone at a phone number with no name attached.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next is to have a motion to adopt the minutes of the February 9th, 2023 Select Board.
Do you want to set the agenda first?
Oh, I slipped right over that. I am very sorry. Backtracking, motion to set the agenda. So you're, for those of you who have a copy, I have a feeling we might have been short a few.
They were here.
There were some other items that got penciled in there, and we are going to take off the second item under the Road Commissioners Report, which is discussing a bid for Bridge 26. That will happen at a later date, so that is off the agenda for tonight. Are there any other additions or deletions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to set the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
While those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Agenda is set. Now we move on to public comment. A lot of public.
I can hear. Can I go first? Well, I wanted to say I'm very happy that a lot of the people in Danby voted for the Declaration of Inclusion. Actually, the percentage of people in Danby that voted in favor of the town adopting the Declaration of Inclusion was an overwhelming majority. I respectfully request that the Select Board heed the request of these townspeople and adopt the Declaration of Inclusion. Please demonstrate that you have heard the people by honoring their request. Thank you.
I apologize, my car wouldn't start.
Let them. Yeah, right. This is public comment. Oh, okay.
Cheryl, you had your hand up.
Yeah. I wasn't here for the reorganization. Are you still the Road Commissioner, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, so you might want to pay attention to this. This is for you. And before I say what I'm going to say, I want to preface it by the fact that I've lived on Baker Brook Road for 40 years, and I have not been before the Board in six years. So I don't consider myself a chronic complainer. At the beginning of February, the weather warmed up, and most of February actually was fairly warm. And of course, as you know, the side roads get quite soft and bad. Baker Brook Road, especially to the west of our driveway, is much worse than to the east, but they're both bad. But I think to the west is some of the worst I've seen. Potholes are connected, you can't get around the potholes anymore. Couple nights I came home, I was sinking in mud, and it was pulling me towards the sharp, on the sharp curves, pulling me, so I went around the curves about five miles an hour on the wrong side, hoping nobody was coming. And we endured this for probably two or three weeks, and I kept thinking they're going to bring sure pack in, they do every year for the bad spots. You don't have to do the whole road, just the bad areas. And nothing was ever brought in. And one day I was driving over Parish Hill, and here's the road crew trimming trees back in the ditches, not from the road, back in the ditches, and I'm thinking, they should be doing these roads instead of trimming trees in ditches. That can be done in the spring or the summer. And then we were going to get a storm, so February 22nd, I texted Mike, is there any chance they could bring in some sure pack before the storm hits tomorrow? Because all this was going to freeze. And I told him, I'm afraid they're going to break their equipment because it's so bad. But no stone came. And the next, so that day started with rain. I happened to be out, and the grader was down in Scottsville, sort of beside deceased Larry Morris's trailer. And they put this hump, it wasn't sure pack, it looked like dirt or sand. I didn't see any rocks in it, and I drove through it. And it was raining at the beginning of the storm, so just to this day, it's a huge mess. It's like a hump, and then it's like this, because it was wet that day. And the grader's sitting here, the pavement ends here, there's these huge potholes at the end of the pavement, and they didn't touch them. So the next day, the storm hit. Well, it changed from rain to ice to snow, and we got probably, I'd say, eight inches maybe up there. We're up another weather line. I had a medical appointment in the morning, I had to leave at 7:30, and the road was not plowed or sanded, neither was Scottsville, and neither was Tiff Road. I came back around nine o'clock, still not plowed or sanded. So I'm like, I think maybe they somehow got mixed up and forgot about us. Because I've lived there 40 years, and generally, the plow comes by between five and six in the morning. Granted, there wasn't school, but generally, they've stayed on the same schedule, and they should, because there's other reasons to keep the road open besides a school bus. So I came back at nine, it still wasn't plowed or sanded. So I knew Mike was out of town. I actually called Fuller Sand and Gravel and was told you were out of town. So I tried to call the town office for 20 minutes, and it was busy the entire time. I don't know why. So I ended up calling Brad. Who, Brad, I want to congratulate you or whatever, you were very good, you were very helpful, you were very nice, and you got back to me. Okay? So he said he was unable to get ahold of Stephen, but he left him a text. Okay? So at 11 o'clock, that was about 9:30, so about 11 o'clock, Stephen called me, and let me tell you how the phone call went. First, he said, this is Stephen Haynes, and I don't know why I'm calling you. I said, well, because our road's not plowed or sanded. So by him not understanding why I had called, that almost, it said to me that maybe they did forget about it, you know? And then when I said the road wasn't plowed, and Scottsville wasn't plowed, but the pavement was plowed and sanded. And I understand pavement gets salt, gravel doesn't. You know, you put the rocks on the gravel, so one truck probably goes out and does all the pavement, I would assume, and the other two trucks do the gravel? Is that how it works?
No. That's not how it typically works. Typically, we start with two trucks on the blacktop so that we can get it done quicker, and then it gets the entire town done faster. Because usually, we send one truck to the four corners, to Paulette, to Timothéen Line, the second truck starts down here in the village.
And no trucks come there?
Being that there was no school that day, when I started from my house, because I took the truck home, because we were expecting it to be very icy and a hard storm, I head for the west side. My first pass is down the blacktop to Little Village or Green Hill Road, whichever it is, and I head out to the west side to get that opened up. And depending on the storm, that's how I usually start my mornings, so that that bus route is done early. And typically, Randy does the blacktop here in the village, and then he'll start the bus route down where you are. And the day that you're speaking of, Randy was dealing with a truck that was broke down in the road. He was trying to direct traffic so that there would not be accidents, as I explained to you.
Why was the truck broke down?
I have no idea. It wasn't one of our trucks, and it wasn't...
Oh, it wasn't yours?
No.
I thought you meant the road...
No, ma'am. It was somebody else's truck that was broke down on a blind corner. Randy was there directing traffic so that there was no accidents, which put us behind schedule. We have a policy, we don't hook onto people's vehicles to pull them out of the road, so the choices are ignore him and see what happens, or stay there and try and keep it safe. And that's what was happening that day.
Well, that's good, but if you're not plowing or sanding Scottsville and Baker Brook, which is uphill the entire way and downhill the entire way, you're going to have more accidents. And let me tell you, it was very icy. So by 11 o'clock, when he called me, it still wasn't plowed. So his next response was that, well, I've been out here since 5:00 a.m., and we can't put salt on the gravel, so the truck couldn't be used. And there was an accident, and he went on and on. I lost track and didn't even know what he was saying anymore, and all of a sudden, I heard a click, and he hung up on me.
Well, I did tell you to have a good day before I hung up.
Well, you know what? I worked 37 years in hospitals. Do you think if I went in the patient's room and said, I'm here to draw your blood, but I've been up since 4:00 this morning, I had to get three kids to a sitter, I had to get to work by 6:30, and there was an accident? Do you think they care? Do you think I should be saying that to them? Oh, we're not calling to complain. I haven't talked to this Board in six years, or to Janice, really, other than voting. We're not calling to complain, we're calling because there's a problem or an issue, and we're not sure if anybody knows about it, you know? I mean, I've been there 40 years, and I don't know that I've seen that happen till noon, not have the road plowed or sanded. And I happened to run into some, a neighbor that lives on Baker Brook today in Rutland. And I'm not going to say who the neighbor is, but this person told me that this is not the first time this winter the road hasn't been plowed. We don't have a direct view of the road, and that a relative in their house has been unable to make it to work a couple days because the road wasn't plowed. Now, what if we needed an ambulance? What if an ambulance was needed on Tiff Road, which is a high risk on Tiff Road? None of them were plowed or sanded. Ambulances don't have horrible drive. And then you've got the people that are working three shifts. I've worked all three shifts in my life, I've taken call, I've driven home at 11 o'clock at night, and it's quite important to have the roads done for them. And my neighbor told me that a relative was unable to make it to work a few days because the road wasn't plowed, and I wasn't aware there were other times. So to me, the only thing people in rural parts rely on are the roads. We do, we have our own water, we have our own septic, we do our own trash, we pay taxes and salaries, so the roads are open for us. So that's very important to rural people. Not only the ambulance, but like I said, people work in all three shifts. But I know we had this problem before with road crew communicating to the community members. You have to be respectful and kind. We shouldn't need a policy, a diversity, equity, inclusion policy. You should know enough to be kind and respectful to everybody, no matter where they came from that live here. Now, I've been here 40 years, and I don't appreciate a call like that. He could have said, hi, Mrs. Bishke, I heard you call. Is there a problem? Or something like that, not, I don't know why I'm calling you. And then, I've been out here since 5:00. Well, I spent most of my life up at 4:00, you know? We just want to know the issue will be taken care of and dealt with. So personally, I'm suggesting, after watching this town for 40 years, I'm suggesting you send your road crew to some training on how to communicate with the community members. And if you're putting this diversity, equity, and inclusion policy in place, you guys are going to have some big issues, from what I've seen, because you have to include everybody. You can't treat your friends one way and somebody that moves here from out of state another way. You're going to have to treat them all the same, you're going to have to have equal outcomes. And diversity, I'm not sure I even want to bring up, looking at four white men. And it's not all race. It's diversity of ideas, thoughts, people that live elsewhere and have come here. So I think there's going to be some issues, from what I've seen in the past. I'm not talking about you guys, but I've seen things hidden from the community members, not told. I've been on the school board, I had a person that was working at the Supervisory Union, sending out a routing to 30 people about what we were doing on the Board, and all kinds of confidential information. A Good Samaritan came up to me in a parking lot one day and informed me what was going on. Those kinds of things are not going to be able to happen here. So you better think long and hard about instituting something like this with the history that I've seen here. And I would highly suggest, I'm sure Vermont League's cities and towns has some kind of training on how to communicate properly. If not, the state does diversity, equity, inclusion training, which might also be good at this point. And if you only want to send Stephen, then he should be responsible for training the other two and hold them to task on that. Is there something in the job description about communicating with the public?
Well, I believe that, I don't want to try to speak on Steve's behalf, and I don't think he felt he was...
Well, you have to, because he can't, being a Board member, he can only as a road commissioner.
If you let me speak for a minute, sure. I'm sure what you thought was rude, I don't believe he thought, but I'll apologize on behalf of the Board that you need to deal with. I think if we stick to the subjects that are important, a lot of your stuff, I couldn't follow you there for a minute. The muddy roads were the fact of, we kind of are getting multiple mud seasons, and unless we plan on tearing up all of Scottsville Road to get out to you, and you should be well aware of this by now, you know, I was working on the roads 40 years ago when you actually moved here, and we had the same problem.
Oh, you were in high school, Tom. You and Mike and Karen were in high school.
Sure, and you can find out if I received a paycheck 40 years ago in the town. So the roads have always had problems when we get unusual mud seasons. So if you think that you were able to get in and out of them, so it's not like you're stuck in the mud, we've had plenty of people stuck in the mud.
I almost was.
Yes, but you weren't. So...
Mostly the potholes.
So, well, and the problem is, the potholes are frozen still, a lot of them. So we're not going to cut through them, we're just going to, basically, all we would do if we went out and started grading a lot of it is make it soot.
I'm not asking for grading, I'm asking for sure pack in specific areas, which is what they've done for 39 years.
Can I just add? Can I just say, Tom, I wanted to say that I got stuck in the mud on the top of, I think you're right about the mud season. We're having a lot of maple trucks on our street now too, on Oakwood Road, like we never had before, so I think that, but the top of Poisoning Cross Road, I have a Prius, and I couldn't get in and out. I had to, and I feel bad about this, I drove on the woman's lawn that lives there, the corner of Poisoning Cross Road, because I couldn't, if I had gone through that road, I would have got stuck in that road. So I suppose I should have called the town.
I guess, and I know what you guys are saying.
Yeah.
But I think what you guys have got to do is listen as well, is, we would have to quadruple your taxes if we were going to put that much material down. I don't think you understand, we're going to have another mud season here in another week.
You can't, you can't not, you don't, well, I live there, every year they bring sure pack in.
We're addressing them the best we can at the mud season.
I don't think you're addressing it at all. And I've paid taxes for 40 years.
Join the conversation.
And I just want to say real quick, if that happened to me again, and I really felt like I couldn't get out, I know taxes, we have to think about money, but would it be appropriate for me to call and say, I can't get out?
Of course it is. In, I guess, every now and then, I mean, a couple years ago, we got hit with a season somewhat like this, and we were out at, you know, Friday nights at midnight and stuff, trying to take care of the mud. So if you can't get through, that's an actual event. If your road has potholes in it and is muddy because we're getting an unusual February thaw, I'm sorry that, you know, that that happens, it's not going to be fixed.
It could be February, it could be April, it actually looks like April right now, but every year it happens, and every year they bring in some sure pack, except this year. Now, Wallingford and Timothéen send their guys out, and they do them by hand. So if you think it's too dangerous or don't want to ruin the road, you could send them out to fill some of those by hand, like the other towns do. And by the way, when our roads weren't plowed, and I came home, Wallingford had Dougway and the other part of Tiff Road plowed already, and nobody even really lives on those roads.
Okay, we have a person online on this subject?
Yes, Annette, are you there?
Yes, this is Annette, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes, so I live on Baker Brook Road, and I haven't talked to Sherry about this, so I'm not the person she ran into. I'm on my third front alignment this year, going back to the fall too, or winter. I've never had to have my front end align before, three times. And I do understand this has been a challenging freeze-thaw cycle. I went out the other day, and what I'd like to specifically ask is, can you do something about the intense potholes that are at the beginning of Baker Brook Road close to East Road? I mean, I was going three miles an hour, and I was afraid I was going to, you know, break something on the car. And my husband and I are really, really careful drivers, and it's just, you know, it's costing. And I'm sure, it's costing a lot of other people a lot more who have to use that road every day to get to work, which I don't. So I'm trying to be understanding, but I also want you to know that this has been a pretty bad experience this year for the potholes. I haven't had, you know, too much, I remember, I remember more than 30 years ago, it's the mud season, and I'd be afraid to drive out, but, but I'm talking about the potholes, and it was frozen, I mean, it was cold, it wasn't like it was thawed. But the potholes are just unbelievably bad, and I don't know how people drive it on their trucks. I also just want to say, I hope that you honor the very strong vote in support of the Declaration of Inclusion. It would send us good message to the people of Danby when we have such a good vote like that, and I hope you will adopt it. Thank you.
Tyler, how, did you care to respond?
Annette, thank you for that. And Sherry, I mean, we'll go out and, or I'll get them out there tomorrow, and we'll deal with as many as we can without, yeah, I mean, things are frozen right now, so, and actually, we had this discussion this morning.
Bay was pretty soft, actually. I drove down there.
Well, we discussed it this morning, that we were going to try to get some of the areas done before it really thawed out and goes right back to soup again, because you do realize we are going to get another mud season.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
I've had to play the Little Village ride too.
Just specifically to help you, hopefully, by the back highway, the Timothéen Highway, right off that is really bad. And then when you get onto Baker Brook, off Timothéen Road there, right there's a bad spot. By Wartman's, when I say bad, I mean, we've gone around them as much as we can, but we can't go around them anymore, there's so many. By Butchy Wartman in front of his driveway, and down by, the curve isn't too great, but I don't know what you're going to do there. Down by Seal, where the little bridge is.
I think we'll address the whole road.
Can't get around it?
You'll see any that are there.
And then off the pavement on, it's not as bad the other way, but off the pavement.
I know what you're saying about the potholes. I mean, obviously, dirt roads can be real annoying.
To me, that's worse than the mud.
I guess my best suggestion is slow down to almost a crawl when you see them, for the time being, until they are fixed.
You have to, you can't go faster, you'll ruin your car.
Yeah, no, but that way, I mean, we had a young guy a few years ago that thought the town was going to pay for, he went through the mud and tore his car all to pieces. And I, you know, explained to him, you know, if it looked that bad, you shouldn't be attempting it. So it's, you know, people are responsible for their vehicles, so just try to, you know, drive as safe as you can and as slow as you can, and it isn't a permanent pothole situation, it's a...
Well, it's been there since about the 1st of February.
Yeah, so...
So we're talking over a month.
I think the point has been well taken.
So just to finish up, by law, the state requires that you post weight limits on roads, and the one down by Route 7 off, for Scottsville, has disappeared, been gone for quite a while. And Scottsville and Baker Brook are two different roads, so really, by law, you should have them posted at the Y.
No, when you come off the state highway, or if you leave the different town, not every road.
If you leave the town.
If, if the, you should be an expert at it by now, but if you leave the...
You should too.
The, the actual, when you come in, say we change the posting, we have to change it, but if it's a continuation, I don't believe we have to change every post.
So you have one at the end of Scottsville, up by Timothéen Pond?
No, it would probably be when, it would be when you get to, from Timothéen to Danby, there should be an actual one there.
We have one too, we have one on Wright's Road too, all those. And the only other thing I'd like to say is, because the town has insisted on keeping the trucks on our road, nothing's been done for years about, the last how many years they haven't trimmed any of the weeds along the guardrails? They got taller than the guardrails? And we need the branches cleared back so we can move over when the trucks are in our, half in our lane. And I noticed last summer, the branches are covering the signs, so what good are those, you know? So I'd like to see it trimmed back.
As you pointed out at the beginning, they were, we've been working hard on getting brush cut. So Baker Brook is on the agenda.
Last, or where?
The problem is, it's a dirt... The, the problem is it's a dirt road, and we don't like to cut it back as much as.
Most of Dandy's dirt.
Yeah, but I, I guess, if you understand what I'm saying, if we can keep a canopy over our dirt roads, it keeps them from being as dusty, cuts back on the amount of calcium chloride. The blacktop, obviously, we want to cut them back farther because it's better for the blacktop to see the sun.
So we have to move over and scrap our vehicles?
I'm just saying that the blacktop right now, and, you know, I've only been, this is my second term, so I've been two years. We, we had quite a deficit in tree cutting, and it was one of my original things I wanted, but you can only get so much done. I mean, we, we operated with a one-man crew for a while, a two-man crew. We are at a three-man crew. I would hope in this next session that we actually start getting some of my priorities done, which brush cutting was one of the priorities.
Well, it appeared to me they were cutting at the back ends of the ditches, which aren't touching the road, so in our case, it's right on the road.
We, we, when we do one road, Cheryl, we like to do the whole road complete, not just get the small stuff.
Well, Parishill already has ditches.
But.
We don't.
Thank you.
I just wanted to touch on the plowing. I wasn't here on the 22nd, so I can't count for that storm, but I leave to go to work anywhere from 3:45 to 6:30, 6 o'clock in the morning, and I leave Tifft Road and I go to Cory Hill every day. There's only been one morning that I have had to, actually, it was a storm, that I had to come down, move a branch out of the road from between reeds and stones. The town truck was out. They had actually pulled up. I moved it out. I moved along, went to work. I've only had one day that they, it wasn't plowed in a normal, my normal work time. It's probably been, for me, the best the roads have been taken care of in the last five years that I've worked at the Cory.
But you weren't here for the storm.
I was, I was not here for that, but I.
And I wasn't here for the last time.
I don't know whoever lived on Baker Brook that told you that they couldn't get out the last two, you know, a couple of times, because I've gone to work every day, and I can see up, and it, they've been taken care of. So usually, if they go up, they go all the way through.
It's different current down there at Scottsville Hill when it's icy.
But I can tell you from, I will say, you guys have done, for me, on my route to work, an amazing job this year.
Thank you, Tanya. Dan?
With all due respect to everyone here, including Sherri, I thought public comment was three minutes. This should have been put on the agenda. I've been sitting here a half an hour now, listening to one item of public comment.
Happy to get out of your way.
I said with all due respect, Sherri.
I'll get out of your way. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
I don't want to repeat what Lauren said. I apologize, but I would like to talk about this. So about the Declaration of Inclusion and asking you to please adopt it. And for background, this is part of a statewide effort to have every town and city in the state adopt the declaration. It's an effort endorsed by the governor and by the League of Cities and Towns, among others, to reinforce the message to all visitors, residents, and those thinking of coming to Vermont, that Vermont is a welcoming community and that we commit to fair and equal treatment of all people. Now, when I've been discussing this with people in the town, there's been a concern expressed to me that this is a law. It is not a law. It's a declaration. Dandy won't incur liability by adopting this. And the best proof of this is that the League of Cities and Towns, which is the town's lawyer and your lawyer essentially, has endorsed it. So there's not, there is not a worry there. After many years of serving on the select board, I look at this as a way, a reminder, when you review your policies and when you're starting to do new policies, it's simply a reminder. It's not something that is, is law. So I know that Tuesday's vote is advisory, but I think a vote of 270 in favor versus 115 is a strong mandate for, for those of you who've been elected by the people, and I hope that you will adopt the declaration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Beth?
Sarah Lee's said in the chat that she supports the statement that Lauren made about the Declaration of Inclusion. So we've got another person standing up for that. And that's Sarah Lee's, L-E-V-Y.
Yeah, if you just write it down, I'll.
Okay, got you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, so we'll close that section of the meeting and move on to adopting the select board minutes for the meeting of February 9th, 2023. I'll make the motion.
There is one date that needs to be changed, Annette.
Okay, well, now's the time to say that.
Um, I put, what did I put? In the minutes from that, where it had the two dates of select board meetings, I'd written 2022 in one of them. So it just needs to be changed to 2023.
So motion to adopt with the correction of the proper date.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next we come to the appointments for this coming year. The first one is local planning commission. It's a seat for three years, and there are two seats available. We have had only two people send in letters of interest. One was Shelley Taylor and one was Greg Heaton.
I'll make the motion. We appoint them.
Okay, motion is made to appoint Shelley Taylor and Greg Heaton to the local planning commission for three years. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded and seconded. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously. Rutland Regional Planning Commission representative and alternative. Shelley Taylor had been our representative. She is wanting to retire from that, and Michelle Bushy, who was the alternate, has indicated that she would be amenable to being appointed as the rep, and Andrea Stoddard has put in a letter asking to be appointed as the alternate.
I'll make a motion that Michelle Bushy and, and Andre.
I know, it's, it's difficult.
Stoddard.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. There any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously. The Rutland Regional Transportation Council has two representatives. We received a letter from John Mickelburst asking to be appointed to that, and there were no other letters received.
I'll make the motion. Now, we got to put a second on there too?
By an alternate, yeah.
Has anyone talked to, who was it? Tyler on there?
Charlie Bush and Tyler Pierce.
Neither one of them have made any. Well, I would make a motion that John Mickelburst be, be appointed, and.
Thank you. I appreciate it, but I'm not here. I would be doing a disservice.
And we'll get Charlie Bush and Charlie Bush.
As an alternate.
As an alternate.
Okay, motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of Mr. Mickelburst and Mr. Bush, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously. Rutland Solid Waste Commission. We presently have board members Ken Abbott and Steve Haynes as the alternate. They are both willing to continue in that role.
I make the motion that Ken Abbott and Steve Haynes represent Rutland County Solid Waste for the town.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously. Roger Bromley has indicated that he is willing and interested in continuing as tree warden.
Make a motion for Roger Bromley as tree warden.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Are there any other discussions? All those in favor of Roger Bromley, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously. Fence viewers, we have Greg Heaton, Ben Bromley, and we had a letter from Donnie Keeler to be put on there to fill the vacancy of the late Mike Green.
I'll make the motion that Greg Heaton, Ben Bromley, and Donnie Keeler.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried unanimously. Okay, so those are our new appointees for the year. Next, we move on to the Veterans Monument, and we have Dan Garceau here this evening with his wife to tell us about some plans for the procedure of having plaques on the monument.
Prior to doing that, if I may, I'd like to apologize if I upset Mrs. Biscay. But I was on the school board for 10 years. I thought we had a three-minute limit. Well, we had set a three-minute limit for public discussion for each item of public discussion. That one went on for 30 minutes, and I think, Brad, we should have put a stop to it and then had, had her come to another meeting on the agenda. Anyway.
And I believe it does say in our procedure that it's three minutes.
It's, but it's allocating two to three minutes to each person.
Right.
So, I mean.
So we did have several other.
So that was long, but then we had several other people contribute, but, but yes.
She was way.
I apologize.
No, you were a gentleman. Don't apologize.
And I didn't say anything about it because I'm just controlling this. You're controlling the rest of it.
Okay, but now you'll only be three minutes.
You're asking me to use this instrument more often.
Yes.
Please do, and, and you may use that to shut me up if you want.
Promise.
Okay, so you, you know, we're here to discuss the monument, and we just, we just have some things we'd like to clarify, and, and hopefully, you're on board with us. If not, we're, we're on board with you, but let's work together. So we all know that Rich Carter started the, started, did all the homework and set, and he set the guidelines over there. So for those veterans' names that are on the big bronze wall, they had to have been residents at the time of their enlistment. If they were a resident of the town of Dandy or Mount Tava at the time of their enlistment, they have the right to have their name on that wall if, in fact, they're a veteran. As for the plaques, those six-by-six plaques, Rich Carter again thought that it might be nice if family members, friends, whomever, wanted to honor a veteran, that they could purchase one of those six-by-six plaques at their expense, prove that, prove that that individual is a veteran, either with a DD-214 or something to prove that they were a veteran, right? And so that they would be honoring all vets, any and all vets, right? Whether you were born here in town or not, or, you know, and just to give you a, a little example, there are a couple down there, right? But, so I, I'm a veteran of Vietnam. My father wasn't a veteran. My grandfather wasn't a veteran. My father's brother is a veteran of the Korean War. He's now passed. He's gone. Maybe someday I'd like to honor him in memory of so-and-so, served in Korea as a Marine, right? Maybe, maybe not, but I think I, I think it would be nice to have that, have, have that right, you know? So that whether you are.
If you live here in Dandy.
Yeah, whether you live here or not, whether that person lived here or not, as long as a resident of Dandy says, hey, I'd like to honor my dad, or honor my grandfather's service in the, in the, you know, and you want to purchase the plaque, by all means, do it. Yes, there is only so much room at the bottom of that wall, but we have a lot of surface on the marble seats, on those walls of the marble seats. There's a lot of surface there. We could put hundreds of them there. Why not honor each, any vet, any vet? I don't, I don't, whether they live here in town or not, as long as they are.
Sponsored, maybe?
By, sponsored by somebody here.
Sponsored by us, a Dandy resident, you know?
So I could buy one for my father. He's a Korean War.
Yeah.
That's what was suggested.
But I'm from another state, but we're from another state.
I don't care.
So you live here now?
I'm from another state too.
Yep.
I've been here 26 years, but I'm from another state. I'm glad.
So Dan, I guess, maybe someone knows this, I don't. Do we have any, or did the memorial group have any rules or bylaws for this on, for us to function off of, or should we write some so that before we open up a can of worms that we actually put down? Because what you said is all good, and it's in our minutes and stuff, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't actually have.
This is all they have that I have. That's the Ford 511. I've got extra. You know, I was on the board, and of course, my memory's not that great, but we did talk about that. Remember, a woman from Bennyton, who wanted to be herself, she was a veteran, when we had to be gone? And I think we said another word, but I can say, I think, and I could look through my minutes, if people want me to do that.
Well, I just didn't want to reinvent the wheel, but I did want to take the good ideas and actually get them down so we don't have to discuss them, you know, in two years again or something again, so that we actually have.
So what we're, what we're saying is we will make a policy on this, Annette.
So if I may finish. Nancy and I, two years ago, we went down to New Orleans, and we went and visited the World War II museum. The sidewalks leading to the museum, all of the flat area around the museum, there are bricks with veterans' names on them in memory of, I'm sure they don't all come from New Orleans. You know, there were millions of them. So, not that we're going to have millions, but that, that is a veterans' memorial, and I don't see any problem with honoring any vet, no matter where they live, as long as they are sponsored by a resident of the town.
No, and I agree with you, and, and I think it's a great idea, but I think we still want to get some, let's call them bylaws or a policy in place.
Well, that's why we're here.
And then that way, we're sure that we don't.
Right.
Discriminate against some people being, you know, as long as the policy's clear up front.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's why, that's why we're here. And then the.
Well, I'll wait till you're, you're done, Dan. Are you done?
No.
Never is.
And I happen to be on the agenda. Okay, no, just being cute. No, okay, so the other thing is, okay, so once, once we get that clarified, who's going to be responsible for saying yes or no?
Well, it's at us.
Yeah, once there's a policy in place, I guess, if they feel that there isn't, if
they meet the criteria of the policy, I guess they could always come to. they meet the criteria of the policy, I guess they could always come to the board if they felt that you erred on your decision.
Yeah.
And how you looked at it.
Yes, okay.
That would, but I would think it should be, hopefully, as black and white as you being able to see the criteria in doing it.
Okay.
Okay.
That's good. And the very last thing is, okay, we're suggesting that on May 27th at 1:00 a.m.
It's a Saturday.
That would be a Saturday.
Memorial Day weekend.
Would be the Memorial Day celebration, some ceremony.
We typically do it on Saturday because people are, on Monday, there's so many things going on.
On Monday, we participate over at the.
Wallingford.
Participate, and half of the people from Danby are in Wallingford watching the parade. So, kind of hard to do it there. And then a rain date of Sunday, the 28th, at 1:00. And can we have that put on the town website?
Anybody have any comment on that?
No, I think that's.
And with that, I'm finished. Thank you.
Okay, and so, on the 27th, it was at 1:00?
No, 11:00 a.m.
11:00 a.m.
Yeah.
And then on the 28th, it's at 1:00?
A rainy day, yeah, let people get out of church.
I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, so now my question to you, Dan, is would you be willing to draft a policy that we could have for our next meeting?
As a former member of this board, the board, and a writer, I think I can put the words together before the next meeting with their help, and we'll come up with guidelines for you guys to approve.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure he's going to need my help.
Yeah, yeah. We're going to have to check.
Whether he wants it or not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
So, we'll look forward to that in time for the next.
Put on the agenda for next, yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Let's see, so that's. Okay, so that concludes your.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dan. Next, we have the planning commissioner's report.
So, I'm here just to bring you up to speed what's been going on in 2023. I'm still trying to wrap my brain around the fact that it's 2023. So, we normally meet quarterly, so we would have normally met January, and then again in April. But because the village designation renewal had come up, Ed Boe from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission had put a bug in Brad's ear, to put a bug in my ear, and we met January, February, and March. And we have everything in line. I signed the letter today, and it should be going to Richard Amori, who is the, he's the one who handles the village designation renewals. We added all the good things that we have done in the town, the veterans' memorial, upgrading like the Silo Script of Store, the Silo Script of End is a work in progress, you know, the marble wall on the church made out of Danby marble, which is a good thing.
The trees.
The trees. I don't even think we added the trees.
No, we forgot to put the trees in.
And that was the historical society thing. But anyways, the packet is good. Dre will be sending it out to Richard in the next couple of days. So, we are up to speed and well ahead of the deadline. And we will be meeting again in April, the first Monday of April.
Thursday?
I'm sorry, Thursday.
Thursday.
I'm going back five years. We make Mondays.
So, that's your reorganization meeting?
That's our reorganizational meeting. Correct, and new business, old business, and then I have an email out to Ed Boe to take a look, start taking a look at the town plan, even though we have, I think we have six years before we have to redo the town plan. There are things we want to look at.
Six years.
So, we will be, it's an eight-year cycle now.
Eight years, so it'll be that short.
Is it, is it been two?
And that's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Shawnee.
And with that, I'm going home.
So, next, we have the treasurer's report.
So, I just have a couple of things for the board. First, I wanted to talk to you guys about Brock loans. I have, there's currently four Brock loans that are being, that I send out statements every month, and I have not been receiving payments consistently. So, I just want to make sure the board's aware, and if you guys want me to write a letter, or do we need to do anything about that?
Now, I guess my question on the Brock loans, those, some of them are quite, quite old, correct?
That's correct.
So, they're not anything that's new to this board. They've been like 10.
When I was on the board.
Yeah, okay. I, I just wanted to clarify, it was the same Brock loans we were talking about.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Okay.
But you do send out the monthly statements.
I do, and I wasn't sure if I.
That's as far as I would worry about.
Okay, all right. So, Steve and Tom and I reviewed the equipment maintenance account because we're over budget, and we found two invoices that we believe should be moved to the equipment reserve account, but I wanted to talk to the entire board before I actually did that move. One is the utility trailer that we purchased from Big Tech's Trailer World for $2,374, and the other one is a Tractor Supply invoice. We purchased a bulk tank for $999. Is it okay that we, if I reclass that to the equipment reserve account?
Well, I think you're, it's, yeah, it's coming out of the reserve.
It would be coming out of the equipment.
Yes, okay, now I'm just clarifying what you were saying, yeah.
Yes, and going into the equipment reserve account.
That's right, correct. So, do you need a motion on that?
No, I just, I don't think I do. I just wanted to make sure the board agreed before I actually did it. Okay, and the other invoice I had a question on was, we just put down a $9,000 deposit for the generators. It was two Tyler Electric, and I coded it to building maintenance, and Brad mentioned that we might be using ARPA money for that.
Yes, we have discussed.
Okay, so I will reclass that also. So, in January, we went into executive session, and I had a question about that conversation. Is it possible for us to go into executive session? Okay.
So, that was listed on the agenda that we adopted, so I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter.
I'll make the motion to go in the executive session.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Please, now, it's time.
Okay, we're back.
Yeah, actually, I do want.
And the next item is, we have a line item called Danby Little League, and that line item has not been used in many years. There's a amount of money, $3,532.29, that I will entertain a motion to move that into the general fund.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried unanimously. Did you have anything else for us, Jen?
No, that was it.
Okay, thank you. And then we have the road commissioner's report.
Well, I think Cheryl did it for us. I mean, other than the snow removal, as she pointed out, they have been, we did get, how many days did you get? A few good days over on the.
We worked three days on Parish Hill.
Yeah, and then, I mean, the rest of the time, we did tackle the mud with quite a bit of material. I just signed an invoice for, that we actually are going to probably set a new record on mud season. But, no, that's, that's been our, our whole agenda for the month, is the snow removal, the mud season, and the brush cutting. So, they stayed quite busy, as well as the, the truck maintenance.
And just to clarify for our friends who might be watching this on TV, or who are participating virtually, the brown material that Cheryl was referring to in front of Larry Morris's trailer, I had a conversation with Steve, who informed me that really is short pack, it's just from a different section of the.
Of their quarry.
C pit, and as you're coming down on Route 7, if you look at the south end of the pit, you will see all that material there, so.
Well, I knew, I mean, we only put short pack down, so it was actually plant mix.
It wasn't some.
So, yeah, no, I, thank you for clarifying for everybody.
Anything else on the?
It's all I've got.
Okay, so then, we have quite a number of fleet permits. It's that time of year. I'll entertain a motion to approve fleet permits for Barrett Trucking, Basin Brothers, Beldon Construction, New England Quality Service, Proctor Gas, Markowski Excavating, Steve Adams Excavating, Cardinal Logistics Management Corporation, RK Miles, and Pike Industries.
I'll make the motion we approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the fleet permits, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that carried unanimously. And then next, Kenny Abbott could not be with us this evening. He has a really bad ear infection.
And strep throat.
What's that?
And strep throat.
And strep throat, well, it just got better. So, there has been more research done on this whole issue of punch cards and dump stickers and so forth. that if we were to increase the, the taxation rate at 1.5 cents in our grand list, that would come out to $26,000, which would actually cover the amount that's being raised now by dump stickers, and then people would be sold a windshield sticker for $15, which we could either say everybody has to buy a sticker, or we could say one is included in your tax bill, and if you want other ones, then you have to buy them for $15, which is what some of the towns do. And Kenny again pointed out that what we are charging is very low. For instance, Rutland Town for a kitchen-sized bag of garbage charges $3, whereas we charge $1. We charge $2 for the 30-gallon bag. Rutland Town charges $4, and so on. So, I don't know how deep we want to get into this discussion tonight since he's not here, but someplace before the new fiscal year, we should make.
They probably table it until April.
Yeah. Jen?
Um, just one comment. I was talking to Darnine, and she said the town, town of Weathersfield has been through the punch card and the actual, like, sticker for the automobile.
So, that might be a good resource for us, just to see what worked for them and how they handled it.
So, more to come at the next meeting. Okay, so, we had some articles at town meeting for people to vote on. The one was regarding the town report being available electronically rather than a printed town report, which cost us roughly $3,000 between the printing and postage and manpower, and that article passed. And then the next article was Article 8, which is the Declaration of Inclusion, and we had a fairly light turnout at the election. We have 989 registered voters, 406 people voted, and of that 406, 225 were mail-in ballots. So, there were not a lot of people that came to the polls that day. I would like to say that during my years as moderator, which I think I did for about 20 years, I very often welcomed people to town meeting by saying it was the 240th town meeting for the town of Danby, and we're glad to see you all here tonight. We don't care if you drive a Chevy or a Ford, or you shop at Price Chopper, or Grand Union, or Shaw's, or if you have long hair or short hair, we're just happy to see that you're taking an interest in your town. And I have always found that the attitude in Danby is very welcoming, and people either do their homework before they move here, and buy a house, and are then disappointed by various things, like maybe they shouldn't have been six miles back on a gravel road when mud season comes around, or they arrive here and then they attempt to change everything. Three of our neighboring towns have the Declaration of Inclusion, and it seems that it has turned a number of residents into situations of strife where there was none before. And two of the towns, as you read back in January, have rescinded their declarations of inclusion. So, at this time, I will entertain a motion regarding the Declaration of Inclusion.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you be more specific about the strife that it's caused in our neighboring towns?
People taking down signs that people put on their front lawns, and neighbors arguing with neighbors, students at Mill River High School arguing with each other over issues that.
So, you're, how do you, that's been going on before the statement of inclusion thing came along? Absolutely. And I want to say, I know that some snowmobilers ran over my neighbor's Black Lives Matter sign in their yard a couple weeks ago. They had to get pretty far off the road to do it. So, that kind of thing is already going on, but I don't think it's due to a statement of inclusion. So, I think there's a cause and effect that might not necessarily be there. And I need to say that Ed and Andrea Stor also by message said they are also in favor of getting it passed. I just really think you all are elected by the people of the town. The vote turnout is whatever it was, and by, and everybody got that town report, and those articles were in there, so people wanted to vote on it, they could vote on it. You've pretty much got a mandate to carry out what your constituents are asking for, and it's not, you know, I don't think you can say that it's causing the strife that's happening elsewhere.
Okay, well, this would have been appropriate for you to make under.
No, but I'm commenting on what you said, and I think.
Well, that's not how our meeting structure works.
I'm going to make a motion that we adopt it.
Adopt it?
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there a discussion?
I guess under discussion. Have you ever spoken with Mr. Wakefield on the, you know, he's a nice guy. I, I mean, you must know Al.
We have spoken.
Yeah, and what was his intent behind it? I mean, I saw his, on the, on the, you know, I know he had an intent, but I, I.
So, Tommy, Tommy, and I came here twice. You weren't here. I offered to have them come and speak to you, Norm Cole and, and Al Wakefield. So, his, his intent was, there was concern that throughout the state, that, well, a couple of things. One was, and, and we. One was, and, and we could have him come, and he would be, of course, much better than I-
You're doing a good job, Hope, please.
So our state is one of the least diverse of states in the whole country, so that was one thing that he was concerned about. The other was an economic issue in terms of our population, our young people are leaving. It's, you know, great people, very happy people are the majority. And people, we wanted, he thought it would be a good way to, for the tourists, we have a big tourist industry, for them to have, to be able to say that this, what this declaration says, just to show that this is a place that maybe you want to come with your family, and maybe you want to start a business. And it doesn't mean that, you know, it's not, that we're being not inclusive now, but if we are being, what, what, you know, what does it hurt? As I said when I was speaking before, as the select board, which I've been on, it is good to have this reminder. I mean, you know, we're all busy, we just, just to remind people that we have to be inclusive, be kind, be aware of everybody that is here.
Well, I think the statement is redundant, but I mean, agreement with it is-
Tom, I wanted to say that, I don't know if folks saw this in the Rutland Herald today, but in the editorial page, so it's one of the founders, Bob Harnish, who I'm not familiar with, I've talked to Al.
You saw Rutland House, right?
Say that again? No, he was Cortina H. Oh, okay. So maybe this helps, because there's a quote from him.
Okay.
"Our vision is for Vermont to become and to continue to be this nation's leader in promoting and guarding diversity and inclusion. Known and respected for its public efforts to welcome all people, with special emphasis on and attention to those groups who have been historically marginalized," said Bob Harnish, one of the co-founders of the initiative. So pretty simple, pretty clean, pretty, like, I would think that a lot of people would want. Let, let's be inclusive, everyone's in the town, and be good to each other.
No, and I just wanted to hear your guys' thoughts on it, because I, like you said, I missed a couple of the times that you guys were here on it.
There's now 100 towns out of 247. We're not counted yet, obviously, because we have to find out. There's 100 towns now. And those, and I just want to point out about those two towns that were in the papers that rescinded, they didn't throw it out, they, they are talking about it again, they're relooking at it, reviewing it. Because they evidently felt, one person on the select board felt that they hadn't considered it carefully. And also, all the surrounding towns have adopted around us.
I realize that.
Okay.
Thanks. Is there other discussion? Andrea, would you hold the board, please?
Al?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Andrea?
No.
Ace?
Yes. Motion's carried.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So, yes.
So, do we have any old business? New business? There was some paperwork that came about the South Lake Champlain request for qualifications for water quality. The responses are due by the 24th of March, and it gets into whether or not we want to participate in this process.
And what is, what do we have to do, Brad, to, and what is the, you don't want to read us 30 pages?
I, I don't really want to read you 30 pages, and this just kind of came in at the last minute, so.
Who's it from?
Barbara Noyes-Bolling at the Home Regional Planning Commission.
It's a lot here, Brad.
I know there is.
You want to read it over? Mike, on your free time. When did we have to have the response on it?
Well, it's coming up.
Due March 24th, and we don't want to have another meeting on it.
Not really.
And I have a hand up here from Annette.
Yep.
Can I ask what it's about?
Did you want to give us what your thoughts are on it, Annette?
What is, yeah, what is it?
Oh, you didn't have a copy, I thought maybe you did.
No, I, I'm kidding you, my thoughts, I knew what it was.
Yeah, no, this just kind of came in at the last moment.
I'll let Brad read you what it, it says on the-
Okay, so the background is the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the Pulteney-Meadowee Natural Resources Conservation District, in their role as the clean water service provider for the South Lake Champlain Basin, are issuing this request for qualifications for related services. For more information, there's a website you can visit. They seek to pre-qualify sub-grantees as outlined in guidance and permitted through the funding and other relevant policies to provide project management services, including any and all of the following: project identification, project development, project design, project implementation, project verification, and project maintenance services, with Basin 24, for an initial five-year period beginning March 1st, 2003, through June 30th, 2028. Organizations that qualify as potential sub-grantees include natural resources conservation districts, watershed groups, land conservation organizations, and municipalities. This RFQ-
Asking the town to be a grantee, or sign it to be a, to approve the RFP?
Well, there's nothing to sign. Qualifications will be evaluated based on information in the applicant's claim, demonstration of overall understanding of the work required, academic and professional qualifications, proven record, demonstration. Seems like-
And it needs a response by March 24th.
By March 24th.
So is it looking to the town of Danby to see if we have any projects that we want to have done?
Project sectors assess, could include assessments and project identification, project development, yes, I would say so.
Yeah. Well, can you think of any stretches of road next to water, or anything that you might want to have evaluated for water quality?
It also wants to look at agricultural land, forest land, stormwater projects, stream equilibrium projects, and other projects.
Farm runoffs?
Do we need, um-
Well, that would be agriculture.
Do we need, I mean, if we're not really doing anything other than applying for it, we don't need a, a meeting for that. We could actually, I could take that, and we can apply for anything that we see relevant, like we do all our other grants, and then you don't have to have-
Sounds like you just need to come up with some ideas, see if you want to get any benefits from doing it.
Yeah. No, I would say, let's go that route.
Okay, so you want to make a motion to submit?
Well, I'm saying, why don't I look it over, and we'll do it like we do our other grants, as long as we find something good we can use on it, we'll, we'll apply for it. But I'm saying, since the response is due by March 24th, that we don't need to have a special meeting to, to apply for a grant, or to apply for any of this, so.
Okay, yeah. Thank you. Any other new business?
This isn't no new business, but it's clarification. I'm realizing that the two-to-three-minute limit is really under what we said was rules for remote attendee participation.
Right, but I think what's good-
But I don't know if you have a policy for people in the room.
Well-
I think it's under Robert's rules, isn't it?
No, but I think what's fair for one is fair for all.
Yeah, you're not going to have a different-
But maybe people need to know that, I mean, well, and if you want me to amend this statement, so that it refers to any participation-
Could we just preface public comments, please, to remind it?
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly rewrite that little bit of the statement, so that it applies to everybody.
I mean, we haven't had a lot of that.
No, I know, I know. And then the chair has to-
And I thought we were giving-
The chair just has to javel there.
I thought she prefaced it with, she hasn't been here in six years, so she was taking up her three-minute business. For six years, so that's why I was going-
Okay.
So if someone puts something on the agenda, they have more time, is that correct? Like Dan-
It would, it would, yes, it's, it's warned on the-
That's a whole discussion.
And, and Dan had a good point there, that she should ask to be put on the agenda.
And she was being repetitive.
But when I was asking you, or to clarify the strife issue thing, but then you said I shouldn't even be speaking because I didn't say I was going to during public comment, and I kind of was like, but I'm responding to that. Is that how you want it to work? I thought we decided people, if they had something relative-
Well, then they need to say, at the public comment time, that I wish to speak under such and such an agenda.
Well, I didn't know I was going to ask you that question, because I didn't know you were going to say that. I mean, there's, there's Patch 22 there.
The whole purpose of it is to have a streamlined meeting where, you know, we don't-
Yeah, I get that.
-hear people reiterating things they've already said.
I have a copy of the declaration, do you want to, or signature?
Yes, and I believe I have one here also.
Do you have to send it to somebody specific, Hope?
When it's signed, I ask for it from the town clerk, and I send it to the street.
Okay.
Just take a look and see if that's the same document.
Yeah, I guess the document I gave to somebody.
So this says, "The town of Danby condemns racism and welcomes all persons regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender identity or expression, age, disability, or socioeconomic status, and wants everyone to feel safe and welcome in our community. As a town, we formally condemn all discrimination in all forms, commit to fair and equal treatment for everyone in our community, and will strive to ensure that all our actions, policies, and operating procedures reflect this commitment. The town of Danby has and will continue to be a place where all individuals can live freely and express their opinions." And all I have to do here is actually fill in the date, which it says, "By the Danby Select Board on March 9th, 2023."
Great, thank you very, very much.
Okay, so you want this to send somewhere, or this just is being filed with the town clerk?
I think it should go to Janice first, then Hope can get a copy of it.
It should go again, so it can be filed, and then I'll stop in and get a copy.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you.
So you have it. And if there's no other, I'll make the motion, we adjourn. There we go. Okay, motion to adjourn, all those, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're so proud.